Okay, C R Y, okay. Okay, everybody ready? We got everything? All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order and please join us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay, adoption of the agenda. Any deletions, additions, changes, or otherwise?
Move to adopt.
Okay, I would like to actually close in memory of Earl Hemming. And also, longtime Brisbane resident who passed away a while back, but we never really got wind of it, was Jan McDalick. Jan lived there on, I think it was Inyo or Mono Street. And used to come to council meetings back in the eighties and was quite a character. And so, I'd like to close in both Earl and Jan's memory. And I think that we didn't actually close in memory at the last meeting, so I'd like to, you know, at the end of the meeting, we didn't do that formally of the folks that we had acknowledged marriedly and one other person. Okay, with that, is that amendment, is that acceptable to the motion?
Yes.
Okay, and the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have a working menu. All right, first up is the oral communications, number one, for any item that is not on the agenda. If anybody would like to speak, address their counsel. Not seeing any hands or slips up here. We have presentations, and our first presentation is to receive Brisbane Library Fiscal Year sixteen seventeen annual report from Francisco Vargas of the library.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think we need to do a report out from the closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay. Thank you for reminding me, City Attorney, okay, can we do a report out from closed session?
Absolutely. On your first item, which on your agenda is item D from the closed session, you gave direction to staff. On item E, the liability claim, there was a determination made to deny the claim. And on F, a recommendation was given to pass along.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. All right, back to presentations. On item A, received Brisbane Library Fiscal Year sixteen seventeen annual report from Francisco Vargas, the library manager for Brisbane. Hi, Francisco.
Hi, Mayor Conway, how are you, members of the council? I'm happy to be here again, and in front of you, you can see a very shiny flash of the press annual report. We do it every year. I'm just here to highlight the Brisbane accomplishments, and I have to be, I'm so sorry, the numbers in front of you on that letter that it's in the folder do not match the numbers on the annual report. So just look at the ones in the annual report, I'm so sorry, just disregard the numbers on the letter. And we normally start with the fact that we have twelve libraries that are unified, and we are very excited that this year, our numbers continue to go up. Circulation, patron visits. You can see there's a lot of things that we do, especially during the summer, that have just raised our profile with the community. In 2017, we also received a prestigious award from the American Library Association, the John Dana Award because of our rebranding. So our website visits just exploded, we had just a lot more library cards issued. This last year, we had fifty-four thousand people visit the library, over fifty-four thousand. Fifty-eight thousand items were loaned this year. Three hundred appointments for three D printing were logged. Seven thousand five hundred community members attended different events. In developing creative programs, we have brought our award-winning Talk, Read, Sing program to the Brisbane Library, which is a very research-based program for babies, and we actually have twelve families in Brisbane participating right now. And the kids wear this little vest, and we're counting their words and interactions with their caregivers. And it's really a presentation all in itself, but I just wanted to highlight it here. Also, we have the book bikes that are rolling around in the park, we had the Lookmobile here last month. We have several outreach strategies, so that we're not always in the building. With us in the attendance is Jennifer Busquet, who's the librarian over at Lipman, and we have a really strong relationship with the schools. We do book talks every month, we've brought authors in collaboration with the schools. We pay half, they pay half, and it's just a win-win situation, so we really, really love it. And this year, this summer, we enrolled five thousand children, and we did over four thousand hours of hands-on activities and active learning. So those are some, a few of the highlights from the library, and I look forward to another valuable and fulfilling year. And if you guys have any questions or comments, I actually have a few more slides, just, I didn't wanna distract you from the message that we wanted to do. And here are some of the examples of programs that we, programs here in Brisbane locally, a lot of music programs. And we increased our number of things that we loan, not just books. We loan ukuleles, we loan toolkits for take-home and kinda check, make sure that you're, you know, you're not losing heat, that you're not, that you can change your shower heads to a low float, all kinds of really cool things that are interesting for adults as well, because we tend to focus on the youth a lot, but we also wanna provide for adults. And here's the Lookmobile, which was parked over at the park for a couple, for a month, and that was very, very fun. So, and again, awards, recognitions. The Big Lift, which is a county initiative, we really proud of that as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Francisco. Any council questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Francisco.
Thank you, Mayor.
So how many, now a second. So how many years have you been in the library world?
I've been in the libraries for twenty-five years now.
Twenty-five years, so over those twenty-five years, you must have seen just tremendous transformation of how libraries were back in the day till today.
Yeah.
Yeah, it must be amazing for you.
Yeah, we used to stand books for checkout, and now we have the self-checkout, we have eBooks, we have just, we're streaming things. We have this one device called the Go Chip, and it's actually five movies in the one, and it's just a little stick. You take it home, and then it has a code, kinda like a Wi-Fi hotspot. You enter into your device, and it automatically streams from that little stick, five movies, and you can skip around. So we kinda say, five kids' movies, hi, five comedies, five, you know, X or Y, so that's something new too.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and it's great just to see that increase in use. And, but, you know, you know, just some of the things you just explained, I mean, you can see that the libraries are on the cutting edge. You're right up there with what's current.
Yeah.
And because of that, you're a viable destination for the folks in our community.
Thank you.
You know, but of course, you know, getting that type of energy and vibe, you know, comes from great staff.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And you guys have been amazing, you know, over the years. Yeah, I just really wanna thank you for all the hard work that you've done, you know, benefiting our community.
Thank you, yeah, and I love it, because I know, you know, we go to the yearly events that really mean a lot, like the citywide yard sale, day in the park. They're just staple events that we're always gonna be there, we hope to increase our presence and bring more collaboration with Parks and Rec, with, you name it, we wanna do it.
Yeah, 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 and in that collaboration with Jennifer, I mean, you know, she's a dynamite lady, and, you know, and, yeah, that's great that, you know, you're making that connection with those, you know, the school kids, because, you know, even though the school district does their thing, and the city council does their thing, and we're all one community. And by pulling resources together and partnering, it just makes us a better community, so, again, thank you very much.
Agreed, thank you.
Anybody else? Karen?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Francisco.
Thank you, Mayor.
My grandkids love the library.
Oh, good.
And Jennifer, thank you for doing what you do, and, you know, I see you down there at the library all the time too, so, thanks. Have a good night. Okay, we have a second presentation. Received presentation from Get Us Moving San Mateo County, from Corey Wallback. Also, one of our colleagues in Palo Alto City Council, has day job and night job. So you're here for the day job.
You got it.
At night.
Thanks for having me.
All right, welcome, Corey.
Good to be here. So, thanks for having me. Glad to be here, representing the Get Us Moving San Mateo County effort. This is really an effort that's a combined project of SAM Trans, County Board of Supervisors, and a number of our partners. We all know transportation is a real challenge, to put it mildly, in San Mateo County and the whole region. So today, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about some of the challenges we're facing, which we're pretty aware of, some of the solutions we're looking for, and also how you can help. So, we know we need to invest more in transportation, and we are starting to identify some solutions. We've been doing that throughout the county. We know that some funding options are available, and really, what the Get Us Moving effort is about is making sure everybody in San Mateo County can have their voice heard about where we wanna prioritize. So, first part of the context is growth, right? San Mateo County, like the region, is expected to grow. We've got some statistics here. You know, we're talking about population growing on the whole, we're talking especially about what some people call the silver tsunami. Growing number of people over the age of sixty-five, seniors, who may require additional transit services and options. We have additional housing that's gonna be focused near transit, near transit lines, and a lot of that is driven by state mandates and state encouragement. And then you also have an expected very substantial growth over the next couple of decades of people who require pair transit services. Second part of the context is the needs in our transportation structures, infrastructures. Transportation systems are aging. We know that we have some of the worst traffic in the country, Caltrain trains are often totally full. People who prefer to bike or to walk, who are able to, often find they don't have direct and safe routes. And of course, as I was mentioning before, both seniors and people with disabilities already need more service, and they're gonna need a lot more as those populations grow over time. Now, there is actually some good news. There are some solutions that are being discussed. Some of these are further along than others in their planning. But from, you know, improving routes over Dunbarton, maybe adding some rail there, whether it's improving bus service, modernizing Caltrain even more in the future, anything from this list, all of these are designed to improve congestion, improve the environment, and help with transit. But, the bad news is, none of that's cheap. So, listed here are just a few examples and some estimated costs. And frankly, SAM Trans and Caltrain will both need additional funding to maintain a state of good repair and to maintain operations. Major highway and local road repairs are gonna be substantial in their cost requirements. Of course, it would be great to fund a lot of this through grants, federal and state, but those aren't sufficient on their own, and we know that those kinds of grants aren't guaranteed, and they're highly competitive. What this really means is that without additional local funding, we're not gonna be able to achieve our transportation goals that are showing on the last slide. So let's talk about solutions. Our local legislators, Jerry Hill in 2015, Kevin Mullen in 2017, passed legislation which enables a half, a potential half-cent sales tax, could raise eighty million dollars a year. It could be passed by, or could be placed on the ballot by the SAM Trans board. It would also require the concurrence of the County Board of Supervisors, they would have to sign off on it also. It could go to the ballot potentially in 2018, and it would require two-thirds vote of the people. So it's definitely not something that's gonna happen overnight, but there was polling done by the Board of Supervisors that does show this is achievable. So, really, the primary goal of Get Us Moving is to understand what the community throughout San Mateo County wants to see, to understand what people's priorities are when it comes to transportation. You know, if there's gonna be an expenditure plan that informs a valm measure, we wanna know which the priorities really be, what should go into that expenditure plan? So our main tool for Get Us Moving is a survey. We have it online, you each have one in front of you. I've left copies in English, Spanish, Chinese, Antigolc at the entrance, looks like this. It's been mailed out throughout the county. We're doing TV spots. It's actually a really short survey with just a couple of questions. If people get one of these, they can send it back, it's prepaid. We've actually had almost ten thousand mailed back already. We've also got hundreds, or maybe even thousands now, who've done it online. And, you know, really, this survey is our primary goal. Or, sorry, our primary tool to achieve that goal of getting public input. The other two parts of this, in addition to the public survey, are two expert groups. One is the technical advisory group, which includes city managers or public works folks from every city in the county, along with the county and partners like BART. I think Randy Brob is your representative on our technical advisory group, so he's been a great, great part of that. We also have a stakeholder advisory group that represents people from environmental advocacy, advocacy for seniors, advocacy for bikes and pedestrians, advocacy for people with disabilities, as well as the private sector, chambers of commerce, major businesses, employers. So we really are, through the technical advisory group and the stakeholder advisory group, trying to get two separate expert groups, get their opinions in, to supplement what we're getting from the general public. So, through the input we're getting from the survey, through the input we're getting from the technical advisory group and the input we're getting from the stakeholder advisory group, over the next few months, SAM Trans is gonna put together a recommended expenditure plan. And that recommended expenditure plan will probably be recommended, will be taken to the SAM Trans board and potentially the County Board of Supervisors in early summer of this year. So what's gonna be in it? That's the million-dollar question. That's the point of the survey. Too early to say what's gonna be in the final expenditure plan, or even the draft expenditure plan. That's why we need people's input. Obviously, as I've said, we're taking extensive community input. We're focusing on the survey, the tag, and the SAG. Potentially, and probably, it could look something like Measure B that was passed in Santa Clara County last year, where you have a number of categories, perhaps for Caltrain, for highways, for bike and pedestrian. Figuring out what those categories would be, again, based on the input we're getting, what the category should be, and how much should be dedicated from that potential eighty million dollars per year to each of those categories. What that means is that although we've already done a call for projects to help inform what those categories should be, over the course of the lifetime of this measure, should it go into effect, projects could continue and, you know, programs could continue to apply for funding for the appropriate category. So, can you help us? Well, again, we're really trying to get that survey out there, trying to get as many people in the county as possible to take it, so that we really have a good understanding of what people's priorities are. So please do share this with your networks. And also, tell us where else we can distribute these surveys, in person, which groups we should be talking to. Who are we not making contact with in this county that we need to? You guys know your community and a lot of the county better than we do, so please let us know. So please engage with our online efforts as well. Like our Facebook page, share the website. Actually, wanna thank Carolyn Chung and Ingrid Padilla from your staff, who've put the website up on your website, so they've linked to us, they've put it up on the homepage, and that's really setting the bar. And I'm now distributing that to other cities and saying, look what Brisbane's doing, really helping with this effort. You guys have already engaged through the tag, your staff is supporting us getting the message out, but anything more you can do to help us would be great. And anyone who has questions or comments can also email us at info@getusmovingsmc.com. That's it.
Thank you, Corey. Any council comments or questions? Terry, any? Madison?
Nope, I have none.
Yeah, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Corey, for the presentation. So you know, you know, a lot of focus and development has been along the transit corridors. And then extending that out, trying to cover the last mile. So in Brisbane, we have a really robust commute.org shuttle system. But you've also talked about that silver tsunami, right? So, you know, we have a good, you know, getting that last mile part done, but it's in between, you know, someone's home and to the shuttle is where we could use some help, because, you know, we live in a very hilly, you know, community, and, you know, it's gonna be difficult for seniors. So, do you think that that's gonna be part of the focus of where you apply funding is to help those get to the shuttle or the SAM Trans bus stop?
Great question. Like I said, too early to say. That's the point of this effort. You know, that's the kind of thing that I wanna hear, that everyone working on this project wants to hear. We wanna hear, what are the concerns for your community? So I'll make note of that, and we're happy to talk offline about it and make sure that we're noting that, incorporating that as the tag and the SAG and SAM Trans staff are working together to put together the expenditure plan over the next couple of months. We wanna make sure we're not losing sight of stuff like that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corey, thank you so much. Yeah, I see that one of your questions in there is east-west corridor, and that's always been the challenge, I think, alluding to Cliff's comment there, 'cause I was the first chairman on that board, and it's always been that, in the inter-county transportation system, how the counties connect, and connect very poorly, and that's sad, that needs to happen. Some collaboration, like San Francisco Muni, you know, all the different, you know, transportation agencies around the Bay Area, so, but this is, it looks like a good start, so, thank you.
Thank you.
For the presentation. All right.
Thanks.
Okay, that's it for presentations, and we have item seven, which is consent calendar. We have four items on there, which is, item A is adopt resolution number 2018-01, amending a land use element of the general plan to adopt ordinance number 623, amending the zoning ordinance consistent with revised general plan. This is the second reading. And consider approval of the First Amendment of the ground lease, Sierra Point Yacht Club. Authorize mayor to sign the document on the city's behalf. And item C, adopt resolution number 28-02, or, excuse me, 2018-02, approval to declare various public works equipment as surplus, and authorize the city to dispose of this equipment. And item D, which is consider approval of the contract with Kingdom Pipeline Inc. for the McLean Sanitary Sewer Pipeline Emergency Replacement Project. Counsel's pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to approve items A, C, and D, and remove item B from consent, as I will need to recuse myself.
Okay, so we have a motion for A, C, and D, and?
Second.
Do we have a second? Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, if Councilmember O'Connell is recusing herself, you can still go ahead and keep it on the consent calendar and take a vote, and the clerk will just note that Councilmember O'Connell's recused on the item for which she's recused.
Okay, and Terry, you're recusing because you're a member of the yacht club, or you're an officer of the yacht club?
I'm an officer, the treasurer of the yacht club, and so I'm removing myself from the discussion.
And I'm a member of the yacht club, is that an issue?
Being a member of the yacht club is not an issue as long as you feel that you can exercise your duty of undivided loyalty to the city. If you feel you can do that, then you can, you do not need to recuse.
Absolutely not an issue, okay. All right, so...
But, I would like to take it off the consent calendar and have discussion about it.
Okay, all right, so we'll remove it, and we have a motion on A, C, and D. Do we have a second?
Second.
Anybody else wanna remove anything?
Nope.
Any questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item B, Cliff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to get some clarification. So, the yacht club, and I apologize for not reaching out to you earlier regarding this, Clay. So, the building that has the yacht club, that was originally built by, with funding from the RDA, I guess this is probably, maybe Randy?
It's the yacht club.
So, yes.
Yacht club's building.
Yacht club building.
Sir.
Is that built with RDA money, or is that from the city?
It was built with yacht...
Yacht club money.
Yacht club money.
Club money, yes, sir.
Okay.
All we've got out there is really a ground lease with that.
Just the ground lease, got it, got it, okay.
Well, we, just to verify, I mean, we never spent money building the building. That was built by the yacht club.
Got it, got it. So that's, this property is different than, say, the Mission Blue Nursery, which we own that building, but we leased it to them. That's a different type of setup, because we're talking about a land lease.
The Mission Blue Nursery is owned by...
I mean, the Silver Spot Nursery, sorry.
Silver Spot, okay.
Silver Spot Nursery.
Yes, it's very different, right.
Wrong better flag.
Yes, sir, that one we own, we own the property and the building, and we didn't build that building, but we bought it from others.
Okay.
The initials in.
Right, got it, got it. All right. And then, so, I know that they want to do a remodel of the bar. So, they have to come before the city to request to be able to do that?
No, sir, they don't need permission from the council to remodel the bar. They would need a building permit to remodel the bar, but because they're gonna expend a pretty large sum of money for a private club, they would like to extend the term of the lease. So to make sure that they're gonna recoup that investment over the years.
Okay, that makes sense. You know, in item D, it talks about, you know, promoting the Brisbane Marina to the general public. And then also to promote the Sierra Point Yacht Club and to the general public. How does the city collaborate with the yacht club to do that? Or have we done that, I mean, in the past? Because I haven't seen a lot of promotion for the yacht club, even though it's, it's great, I mean, I think...
Right, that's my point.
Little asset, so I'm just...
That was the point of that term, sir, because although it was never spelled out in the lease, it struck staff, but that's the fundamental reason as to why you would enter into a ground lease for a dollar a year with a property, is that you're providing an amenity out there that can be used both by boaters... out there that can be used both by boaters and that can be used by non-boaters. You don't have to have a slip at the marina to join there. So what this does is it just memorializes the fact that the yacht club agrees that, "Yeah, we're here to promote the marina," and the marina says, "Yeah, we're here to promote you too." And so the way we've done that is further down in the lease, it talks about that we agree that for three to four events a year, that the yacht club will allow us to use their facilities, and they'll provide staff to the facility, so, you know, if we want to cook hot dogs or hamburgers, like this year, we did a kite-flying festival the first time. Widely popular, but we didn't have any refreshments out there. So if we want to be able to sell hot dogs and stuff, we think that's great because it adds to the experience for the marina, so people come down, and even though all they're doing is flying kites, they see a beautiful environment, they see a beautiful marina, and they think, "Wow, this is wonderful." Maybe, maybe they don't have a boat, but maybe they have somebody who does. Then they go into the yacht club, they talk to the nice people there, and they say, "Oh, jeez, I wish I had a boat I'd join." And the yacht club folks say, "Well, you know, you don't have to have a boat to join. You can join." So it's very mutually supporting. It works for both sides. If we get the yacht club membership up, it's much, much more likely that the tenants' occupancy rate down there for the marina will go up as well. So, you know, the sea in this case does lift all boats, and so we're hoping to make it happen that way.
Yeah, no, I think that would be great, because, you know, it's a wonderful facility, and, yeah, if there was, yeah, greater partnership with the city and the yacht club to promote the yacht club, I think that would be excellent. Okay. And just one last question. The city doesn't provide any other, the city doesn't provide any financial assistance to the yacht club?
No, sir. They're fully independent. They pay their own utilities, they do their own improvements, we, nothing. I think the only thing we do is the, the city does pay the harbor master's dues to belong to it. That's about the extent of it.
Okay, cool. All right, all right, thank you. And if anyone does have any other questions, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Item B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. We can have Councilmember O'Connell come back in. Okay, we're on Item 8 of the agenda, which is a public hearing, which is Consider Introduction of the Ordinance Number 624, Zoning Text Amendment, RZ 3-17, zoning text and map amendments to adopt housing overlay zones PA 0Z-1 and PA 0Z-2, that's O, and to implement the Parkside at Brisbane precise, Brisbane Village Precise Plan. This proposed ordinance is to implement the Parkside at Brisbane Village Precise Plan by adopting zoning text and map, establishing Parkside overlay zones PA 0Z-1 and PA 0Z-2 for housing. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. By way of reminder, the Parkside Plan was adopted by the council in October of last year, October 30th, and this particular zoning map and text amendment are required to fully implement the Precise Plan. The, these actions were considered by the Planning Commission during public hearing on November 28th and recommended for approval by unanimous vote. Planning Commission resolution and background material is attached to your staff report. Just real briefly, it essentially creates a new overlay zone district within, within the zoning ordinance, a new chapter 17.27. The map amendments will also apply the overlay to the discrete properties identified along Park Place and Park Lane that are the subject of the amendment. And again, this is all fully, there's no new information in here. This is all basically codifying material and requirements that were established in the Parkside Plan, so there were no substantive new additions here. There was one discussion, the property owner had some concerns and some questions, or their attorney did, proposing some additional changes, clarifying language to the actual zoning text. And to address their concerns, we have suggested adding a definition of overlay district, which is an attachment to your staff report as well. And so with that change, we're recommending that the council introduce Ordinance 624. And that concludes my comments.
Okay, before we open a public hearing, is there any council clarifications of staff?
Nope.
I don't see any. Okay, public hearing is open. For any member of the public who wishes to comment on this item before us, which is Ordinance Number 624. I don't have any slips, and I don't see any hands. Okay. Counsel's pleasure. Wish to close public hearing?
Yep.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
A second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, counsel's pleasure.
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 624, Zoning Text Amendment, RZ 317.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Very good. All right, we're going to move to Item 9, which is New Business, which is Item A. Consider Providing Direction to Staff Regarding Zoning Ordinance Provisions Pertaining to Minimum Distance of Cannabis Businesses from Schools and Daycare Facilities. The purpose of this discussion is to determine whether the council wishes to provide staff direction regarding a zoning text amendment to consider amending a Brisbane Municipal Code, BMC, Chapter 17.33, regarding the prohibition of cannabis businesses within the 600 feet of a school or daycare facility. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. When the council adopted Ordinance 617 in last October, regulating and allowing certain types of cannabis-related businesses, it included a requirement that new businesses be located more than 600 feet from schools, daycares, or youth centers. And again, there's a map that's attached to your report that showed which properties are impacted by that restriction or limitation. This is consistent with the requirements of state law in terms of the 600-foot buffer. However, it should be noted that state law allows local jurisdictions to alter that buffer, making it either more restrictive or less restrictive. So the council does have latitude in changing that requirement. In exploring, well, subsequent to adoption of the ordinance, we've been in contact, a local business interested in opening in Brisbane has been in contact with staff, and they've noted the 600-foot buffer requirement represents a significant business constraint by restricting allowable locations in Crocker Park, which is a somewhat constrained market in terms of there not a lot of available spaces in Crocker Park. In exploring options to expand opportunities for cannabis businesses in Crocker Park, the zoning ordinance could be amended to modify, reduce, or eliminate this buffer requirement. Perspective cannabis business has expressed an interest in filing a zoning text amendment to reduce or modify that buffer requirement. However, given the broad policy matter and the fact that this was just recently adopted by the council, we thought we'd bring it back to you for some guidance and whether, you know, some feedback to that. Council also has the option to, an authority, to initiate such an amendment if you're so inclined. So with that, I take any questions you might have.
Council questions?
Um...
Go ahead, Madison.
So for the, let's see, I read it here a second ago. Darn. Okay. What, the properties that are in the industrial park, I had them listed here, but I cannot, I don't know where they are now. How many feet are they, the ones that are, are they like, you know, 500 feet away, or where exactly are they within that 600-foot radius?
Sure. So the mapping system that we use and the measuring method that we use is from property line to property line. So the map on the attachment to the staff report from the July 20th report shows a red circle, basically, that highlights any property that is within 600 feet, but it didn't actually calculate to the front of this particular property what the actual distance is. It's, their property lines are within 600 feet. We just don't have that exact number for each property.
I just mean, like, for us to know how to give direction, because I found it here, all properties along Park Place, all properties along Park Lane, properties on the south side of Valley Drive and 200, 300, and 400 blocks. And, you know, the visitation and the shopping center seem to be out of that, but, so let's say we would modify it to be a different number, like 500 feet or 400 feet. We would need to know that, how that, how that would impact those properties in the industrial park. You know what I mean? For us to figure out how we're going to give direction, if it would, because I, I don't see the council wanting to get rid of 600 feet entirely, but we all, I would, I would imagine the council would want to come up with something that would make it feasible for businesses to exist in the industrial park and, you know, be able to, to secure a space when it's pretty, pretty difficult there. So there's, you know, minimal opportunities. So I'm just trying to figure out, like, what, what, what amount of feet would work to kind of accomplish all of that?
I think another way of looking at it is not necessarily looking at the, changing the, the distance.
Be like building to actual physical building to physical building?
Or, or even if you didn't change that, you could make that a performance standard, that it's, that when someone applied for a use permit for one of these businesses, they could get an exception to that standard.
Oh, okay.
So the idea that there's something unique about the business or the location, that that 600-foot, you know, the commission or the council would have the authority to waive that 600-foot...
On a case-by-case basis.
Separation, yeah. So you don't have to try to come up with a precise number. That would be one way of amending the code to sort of address that.
That would certainly be a lot easier. That way, you know, you could take each individual case and evaluate it. Okay, that was my only question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my questions are related to where Councilmember Davis was going. So, John, in your, in your staff report, you had mentioned that, that cities have the ability to either expand the footprint or they can, they can reduce the footprint. So, you know, just looking at Figure 2, so could the, could the council have, you know, keep the 600-foot radius in the residential area and, say, use something like Cory Road as a, as the border on the east side? So that then all of the Crocker Park properties could be accepted for the cannabis use?
Yeah, certainly the council, you could do that. You could exclude out Crocker Park from that distance separation. Just to be clear, I know the ring shows residential properties, you know, within 600 feet of Lippman, but just a reminder, there are no cannabis businesses permitted in residential zones, so, you know, that's really not applicable to the particular issue. So, so, you know, that would be another way you could certainly, and if you wanted to initiate a code amendment, we could come back with several different alternatives, potentially. One would be more of a, you know, performance standard that could be granted or waived on a case-by-case basis, or we come up with a geographic limit that basically allowed such businesses anywhere within Crocker Park?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I'm just speaking for myself. I mean, if, you know, we allow it in some parts of the industrial park, I, I don't see certain properties in industrial park being, you know, a risk to, to, to children. So, I mean, I, I would amend our ordinance to, to not have any restrictions, is, you know, with all the properties in the Crocker Industrial Park.
I would be amenable to that. I, I think that it, it's something we're trying to, you know, work out the, it's still a conditional use, so any business isn't going to be a storefront and it's going to be granted a use only if it has the performance standards that we look at, so I would be amenable to that.
Yeah, and this would, you know, so if we had the, so if we took away the restrictions in the industrial park, along Visitation Avenue, that still would be in place?
Uh, yes. I don't, again, I don't think there are any locations in Visitation that...
So this was one...
There are no permitted locations for cannabis businesses on Visitation.
Okay, okay. All right.
I kind of feel the same way, that I wouldn't want to restrict certain commercial buildings from, from this, and as it's a conditional use, they've got to come before, anyway, to talk about it, the business. So I kind of feel the same as you guys.
So can you reiterate what you heard?
It sounds like the council would direct staff to initiate a zoning text amendment to eliminate the 600-foot buffer as it pertains to properties within Crocker Park. So any property within Crocker Park is eligible. That's, and I will come up with the precise wording, but that's, that's the direction I'm receiving this evening.
Is that what I'm hearing from?
Yes.
Three or four people? Okay. All right. So that's the direction, then. You don't need no motion to write that, so, okay. All right. All righty. So that's going to take us to staff reports, city managers' report on upcoming activities.
So, and we'll be getting to your calendar here in a moment, but just to kind of make a general announcement, that the January, the next council meeting will be January 16th. It's a Tuesday, not a Thursday. It'll be at 7:30, and that will be the continuation of the meetings with regards to the Brisbane Baylands project. The next regular city council meeting will be on February 1st and then February 15th. Also, not yet scheduled, but just keep in mind that we may need a closed session prior to the January 16th meeting. If we did, that would start at 6:30. We'll let you know.
Everybody good with 6:30 start?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Clay. Anything else to report?
That's it.
It comes to mayor, count, oh, I'm sorry, Oral Communications Number 2. Anybody wish to speak on anything? Okay, no slips, all right. Bring this to mayor council matters, Item A, county-wide assignments and subcommittee reports.
I don't think I had any...
Anybody?
I had two meetings.
Go ahead, Madison.
We had affordable housing this week, I think. Kind of a blur, actually, at this point.
We did. Yesterday.
Wasn't yesterday. Oh, my God. Yesterday, we met. And we're just kind of discussing, you know, moving forward with looking at housing on the teen center site and having an architect come forward with some proposals, two different designs for that site. So, anything else you want to add?
Yeah, it would be a cost of $7,000.
Yeah. So for them to do, for them to do that work for us.
Yeah, but it would come before the council, of course.
Right.
The contract's not. We're going to go forward with the contract.
Oh, okay, all right.
But obviously, the designs will.
Yes.
Okay. And we, Clark and I met at the school 2x2.
Brisbane School District.
Yeah, Brisbane School District. And we discussed a variety of issues. We spent a significant of time on the, a significant amount of time on the bus. We didn't really get very far, but it, I mean, you know, we're just, we're all trying to think of something. And this was Brisbane School District, not, not Jefferson Union High School District. And we also talked about rec program and getting the portable out there and the timeline for that. And we did talk a little... And we did talk a little bit about unification and Bay Shore, and we just, we just were talking, it was about an hour and a half, we talked about a number of different, different things. Is there anything else you want to add?
Yeah, just, we decided that we're going to meet on a, a regular basis. We're going to meet quarterly instead of, you know, having something, you know, to where it's like, oh, let's try and get a meeting together, so we're going to meet on a consistent basis from now on, too, to where we meet quarterly. And, you know, there may be short meetings, or there may be a lot of things that we have to talk about, so, you know, we, obviously, you know, one thing we really agree on, we serve the same constituents, and most of them are non-voters, they're little ones, you know, so want to keep that consistency there.
Yeah.
And the relationship, the working relationship, so. And I think the school board and superintendent recognize and appreciate the collaborative effort that we have between the city and the school district, so.
Yeah, it sounds like it was a positive meeting.
Yeah, it was positive, yeah.
Yeah, it was positive.
Anything else, Madison?
No, that's all I had, I believe.
Karen, anything?
Nope.
Okay, Cliff? That was it?
That was it.
Okay, and that was it for me. All right, so we don't have any written communications? All right, brings us to review council's subcommittee and county assignment list and make necessary changes. Oh, yep.
We did have a written communication about massage ordinance, and I sort of felt that was out of the blue. Maybe staff can, I, I think the letter was also in, in Clark's box that I saw when I walked in there.
It was sent to me and I put it in Clark's box.
Okay, I think, I think we might all have gotten them, and I just didn't know if there was a reason that, that they were offering to help with an upcoming massage ordinance, or if that's sort of done right at this point.
Thought we massaged that, too.
I thought we did, too.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
I'm not aware of any revisit of that.
Okay.
I'll look at it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was kind of out of the blue.
Thank you.
Okay, so item D, which is to review council's subcommittee and county assignment list and make necessary changes, which obviously we will.
Are we going to do item B?
Hmm?
Are we going to do item B?
Item D.
B.
Are we going to do B?
Oh, yeah.
Which is...
City council meeting schedule. And scheduling interviews for...
Well, pardon me, yeah, sorry, thank you, Madison. Pointing that out. Jumped over that one. Okay, I thought I was going to get away with it. Okay. Item B, which is the city council meeting schedule, and I think, Clay, you kind of laid that out up to February 15th, and so we have agreed upon February 25th, Sunday, 10 to 2?
Yes.
For a goal-setting workshop?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and is there anything else that we...
We need to schedule the interview.
Interviews with the city commission and committees.
Would you like me to send out a doodle poll?
Yeah.
That would be the best, I agree.
Currently, the deadline is not until January 12th, so we still have about a week, but I'll try to do a doodle poll for like a three-hour session for 16 vacancies.
Okay.
Have we been getting a...
Sixteen?
Yeah. Have we been getting a lot of folks applying? I agree.
No. Unfortunately, maybe because of the holiday season, we haven't yet.
Could, could the council tonight extend that deadline?
That was going to be my request as well.
I, I think we should extend the deadline.
I buy me.
Council meaningful.
Okay.
Let it be said, so let it be...
Maybe they end in January?
Yeah, is that what you like, January?
Before the February 1st meeting would be great.
Yeah.
Give a report back. Okay.
Okay. All right, so that's it on that.
So do we, since item D is in another room, can we adjourn to the, because that should be like a workshop, is what it was before on our agenda? So perhaps we could adjourn from this meeting so that we can do our official adjournment with our, in memories, and then adjourn to, change item D to a workshop and hold it after the fact?
I'm going to...
Yeah, that's an attorney question.
Attorney there.
You are, would not be technically adjourning the meeting, but you can take an item out of order and then resume the rest of the, this meeting in your, in a workshop format, which would accomplish the same goal.
Do we need to, we, do we need, did somebody request this to be in a large conference room, or is that just...
Well, we've typically done it.
Oh, okay.
It's kind of your call. If you want to do it there at the dais, you could do it, it might be easier in the conference room.
I don't care.
I think it'd probably be easier in the conference room.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going with that.
Okay, all right, all right. So, when we do adjourn, we're going to close in memory of Earl Hemming, Jan McDalick, and Mary Edley, and who, who was the other?
Reed.
Eric Reed.
Eric Reed.
Eric, the council member of Belmont. Okay, all right. In that case, we will go to the conference room. And for those who wish to attend, that is an open meeting still, so if you want to...
We might give you a subcommittee, though.
Okay.